As council member Anne Snape, do you recognize that we have a forum present tonight?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do. And at this time, I would appreciate the ask inviting Greg Mettis, who is the pastor of the Methodist Church. If you will come forward and show us an indication, please.
Let me say it's an honor and privilege to be with you tonight. It's an honor and privilege to be a part of the Jasper community. For many people, you get to choose where you want to live. In United Methodist Church, I'm assigned and sent to churches. Well, my wife and I feel very blessed that we were sent to the Jasper United Methodist Church. I am in the midst of my eighth year, which means I am tied with the longest tenured United Methodist pastor in Jasper since we've been keeping records. If I can come one more year, if I'm reassigned in June, if the people want me back and the United Methodist Church of North Georgia will send me back, I'll get to have the longest tenure in this community. And we hope it goes longer because we've enjoyed being here. My wife and I love being here. My wife retired from teaching school here and now works with Mountain Head. So we're excited to be a part of this little community. Glad that we have been welcomed and received all these years. Allow me to share a word to open our certain our time tonight. Let's pray. Gracious, loving, and almighty God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our city of Jasper. Lord, we thank you for all that takes place here. We thank you for all the businesses, for all the churches, for all the opportunities. Lord, we ask your blessings to continue to be a part of our lives. We ask your presence in the midst of this meeting tonight. The Lord, we would know you were present. And Lord, that you would help us to know what it is that we ought to do. Lord, we ask for wisdom and discernment. Lord, we pray that your presence will help us as we strive to be a blessing to this community. For this, we pray in your gracious and holy name. Amen.
We're approaching the first review. May I ask how pleased you are?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, you have in front of you all these documents, our agenda. I will entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as presented to us.
Summate.
In a second, please.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the agenda is adopted. Counsel, out of one of our agendas, our consent agenda. I will entertain a motion at this time that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. We have no unfinished business. Under new business, item number one is consideration approval of JMA events. That would be Halloween trick-or-treat and the night of lights at Christmas. And we'll ask Ms. Haley Boucher, she will please bring this to us. Haley, Mary.
I'm wonderful. I'm glad to be back in person. It was nice seeing you all on Jim, but I'm glad to be back, so.
Some of us are much gladder than others.
Much gladder, there you go. So I'm here for two reasons this evening. Talk about, first of all, Halloween trick-or-treat. As normal, it's October 31st. And we are requesting that we have the street blocked off. We, at 3:30. From 3:30, we try to get them off the road, off the street by 7:00, hopefully.
So if you want that October 31st and block off the streets starting about 3:30?
Yes.
And this is consistent with what we've done in the past, I believe?
What we've done for many, many years. We try to get everybody off Main Street, but it doesn't always work. So we just leave those cars there until everybody's done.
What, have we discussed that with the police department? As to the closing?
Yes, you want the street closed at 3:30. What time is the trick-or-treating going to start? Is it going to be at 4:00?
Yeah, it's at 4:00. It's usually from 4:00 to 6:00. We just wanted to make sure by 7:00. I mean, they can close it as soon as we get the streets cleared off. Or open it back up, I'm sorry, as soon as the streets are cleared off. It's just sometimes we ask riders. We had a huge turnout last year, I believe, thanks to the mayor and the rest of you with all the merchants coming out. It probably was the best year that I've been involved in. And I believe that's been my, maybe my eighth one. I think I've been here eight years. So I appreciate everything that you did and we hope to see the turnout again this year.
We did have some good turnouts.
Yeah, it was great. We really had a good time.
Any other questions?
We did have a request from the middle school principal. I think this fits his need.
Yes.
They were wanting us to avoid a Friday.
Yes.
So that's good.
Counsel, this time we have taken a motion to approve.
Some of the.
In a second.
Second.
Second by any. Any more discussion?
Sonya, I have a question for you. I think it's appropriate in discussion. It was my understanding, and I'm assuming I was wrong, but that the staff is going to be handling these type of things moving forward?
Yes, sir. We actually, I have created a form. And that form goes through the police department, fire department, and city manager's office on street closure, so.
And that was going to be my question because I know Arbor Hills is always a big thing as to the 7:00 o'clock. Trying to coordinate that with the police department.
Yes. But I think this situation is unique in that it's two events. And they're kind of high-profile events. So I think they were, they should have come before counsel, just as informational.
Okay.
Can I make a recommendation that we look at having Halloween on Halloween? Every year we're asked this question. I mean, and it's like we have this discussion. Can we just kind of agree to? So when they present it, not know if that's going to be, you know what I'm saying?
We never present anything other than Halloween. We want to do it on the day of Halloween. Once in a while, we get a little bit of pushback from the merchants. But it is what it is. We want to do it on Halloween. And it's on a, so it's on Monday this year, so. Yeah, we've never not had it on Halloween.
I agree with Ann. I think it's a good thing. That way people can go ahead and set their calendar and be done with it.
Right, and we've always tried to make sure that we're considerate of what they do at Arbor Hills so that we're done and off the street right at 6:00 so they can move right into there, so.
Right, and I understand that and I appreciate that. I just wanted to double check with them because I know we're a little bit short on the police department. I want to make sure that we can transition from one to the next and have enough officers to do that.
So now are you asking our city manager to make sure that she tells everyone that Halloween will be actually the day of going forward?
Well, I'm just saying going forward, you know, I think it'll make it easier for them. That is not the question.
One better formal motion to.
Well, actually, this event is hosted by someone other than the city. All they're requesting is that we provide resources to assist them in their event. So it's not really our event set.
But we're talking about the city.
Celebration of Halloween.
The city is question, I know for several years it's been like, are we going to do it this day or this day or this day?
It's on Friday night. We don't want it on Friday night.
And you don't want to do it on Sunday.
We don't want to do it. Let's just do it. I mean, if we say 6:00 date, it's 6:00 date. If you want trick-or-treat, fine, if you don't, no, I mean.
We will absolutely adhere to Halloween on the day Halloween is set. The organization that's operating the actual event is actually the one that would communicate out when the event is. And obviously, we would share it on our Facebook and all of our other communication tools. But if there was a change in their date, I'm sure they would present it to the city and we could negotiate accordingly.
Well, they'll fill it out in the future.
Absolutely.
But you'll, I mean, you'll do a good job and we appreciate everything that you do.
Every legal request comes before the city manager's office.
Right.
So at this point, counsel, I would have taken a motion to approve this as presented.
Mayor, we have a motion and second on the floor for the event?
Yes.
We were in discussion on the first motion.
Yes.
Correct. That's the one that I'm asking.
We have a motion and a second. Should be for.
Oh, we do. You can play the discussion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries. Thank you, Kirk.
Yes, sir.
Item number two, and thank you so much for bringing that to us. Did you have something else?
Christmas. The night of lights, Christmas parade, as I was.
Christmas parade, night of lights.
Yes, so first of all, we were approached last year and asked if we would consider moving it to Sunday. First of all, we now would really mess with the Georgia football and God forbid we get in the middle of that, so. Second of all, there are some people in the town thought they would work better since Ball Ground has it on Friday night, Holly Springs has it on Saturday, always at the same time as we did, if we would consider moving ours to Sunday. We really didn't have a problem with that. We asked some questions. Our only worry was the band because the band director said, absolutely not, we are not doing Sundays. Well, he just got back to us in the last week and said, we will be there. So they were our biggest worry. So we will be moving it to Sundays now until further notice. Now, that may change down the road. We'll see who doesn't like that, so. But for now, the Georgia people are going to be thrilled to death. So this year will be on December 4th. We are asking to have the streets closed at noon. And the street closing would be from D.B. Carroll to Spring Street.
Noon to what, I'm sorry?
Well, we, I put on here 9:00 P.M. We're usually up and out of there well before then. Once the parade is over, it's done. Depending on how big the parade is. I don't even know how long, I have not seen the front of a parade in eight years, so I don't know. How long was it last year? Do you know?
Seventy something plus.
Yeah, so we're getting, I mean, it's growing. We get bigger every year, so. I think that probably takes an hour and a half.
There'll be some vendors.
If they move right along. So that puts us at 7:30. We hope to have everybody with our vendors and everybody cleaned up by 9:00 P.M. Street completely done, but we'll probably have it sooner. That's, that would be the latest case scenario.
Where are y'all with the vendors?
We put them in the parking spaces along Main Street.
We know that's to our homes this year, or if there's already.
I have not heard a thing. I don't know.
I heard less like they're working on it, yesterday. Heard they're working on it. I don't know what day.
So that is what I am asking for. In past years, the city has always furnished the stage. And we would love for that to happen again this year. Other than that, we're going to, obviously, police and fire. And I can get Dawkins with that to look. And he's, we have a pretty good idea of how many we're going to need. Since we've moved lineup spot, we're going to need a couple more officers. That game got to be in mess last year because we needed two more streets closed that we didn't need before, so we will need a couple more. He is aware of that.
Where do y'all live? Where are you going to live?
What's your church?
Revolution.
Revolution Church. It used to be in the old shoe factory, so we didn't have to close off any streets. But when we moved to Revolution Church this year, there's two intersections that we had a terrible time keeping, keep a lot of.
So that would have been Good Road and Mary Street.
Yeah.
We've already reserved the stage. And we'll come up with a map that we can publicize of the street closures.
We run a four.
Okay.
Will we close in 53?
No. Well, only for the parade, but no, we've never, we were never asked to have that done. We know that causes a lot of problems with the state, so.
What time is the ballroom?
6:00 o'clock. They do the lighting of the tree at 6:00 and then usually by a couple minutes after, as soon as we can get.
6:00, 7:00, not closing.
The chief started, then we can go.
Because the toy run is that day, that's why we check.
It's always 53, so.
Yeah, we will only close it at 6:00 o'clock for the parade.
We'll be late?
Lots going on that day, I guess.
I make a motion we approve December 4th as for Christmas downtown merchants have their Christmas parade. I guess it's DDA instead of downtown merchants.
And Jim, will that include the staging of the stage also?
JMA.
Okay.
Ah, okay.
Sorry, so include the stage also. So have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion by counsel?
Boucher, is our stage here? We don't have a stage.
Any further discussion by counsel?
I mean, y'all get the police department, fire department.
And I'll get Dawkins as well and we'll get that taken care of.
I'm sorry?
Don't forget Sandal. She said police and fire, I said don't forget.
Maybe somebody may want to tell Sandal.
We already have Sand on the line. We're good.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? The motion carries, your name, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you. Lovely to see you all. See you next year.
Under new business, item number two, consideration approval of adding an additional date for the city of Jasper municipal court calendar. We'll ask Sonya Dunne, if she will bring this to us.
How are y'all?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, good. I'm just bringing this to y'all. I've had a little crowd in the courtyard. We've got, over the past year, we've had an increase in tickets. We're having, since the COVID era. You know, you don't leave people sitting too close to you, you still have to be careful. Well, we're having people filling up the seats. We're having people on the hallway and outside the courtyard. Fifty to 70 people in each month this time there. And it's a safety issue, of course, sickness, and it'll just make things go quicker if we can just break it down into two. And what I want to do is I want to have it in the same week, Tuesday and Thursday. And we're getting the computers in the cars, so the computers will be able to just handle that. Whenever they issue a ticket, it will go everywhere in that way. It might get even. It'll make court go quicker. And I think it would just be overall better for the court with the excess tickets we've been getting. Because from last year, I would say it's probably increased a good bit, at least 50 to 60 tickets a month more, so. And we have a little bit of that people coming forward too.
And let me ask you a question the judge has already signed over on all this.
Yes, I spoke to the judge and we spoke to him about their pay. And they're all on board. They've already cleared the dates and made sure. Because, you know, he has other courts and the other ones are attorneys, so they have other dates they have to go to. But I've cleared all that with him and he's on board.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve consideration for adding an additional date for the city of Jasper municipal court calendar.
Summate.
Second.
The only question I got. That wouldn't interfere with your elections? I know that was an issue.
No, that wasn't an issue. This will actually help with that. If there is an election that falls on a Tuesday, we have court. We can just move everything to that Thursday and, you know. Yeah, it'll, it'll help with that too. That way we won't have to move locations back and forth. It gives us another.
I knew that was an issue last year, Sonya was mentioning that, so.
And it will also, if I might add, alleviate code enforcement because we've started writing tickets on code enforcement issues. And there's a certain time set aside during the municipal operations that all code enforcement infractions are heard. So this will help alleviate the time constraint regarding those as well.
So is there a budgetary impact or?
There will be a budgetary impact somewhat. We've vetted those costs. It's going to be minimal compared to the efficiency that it's going to build in. And I will say that with the increased traffic and, and just people coming to the area, those revenue lines are probably going to continue to increase. We're going to start seeing more people in municipal court than less. So we need to put a foundation and put a strategy in place to start handling that future development, the crowds coming along with the future development as well. And so I think in the end, the cost of what it would cost to operate it two days will, will be a wash as far as, as the tickets that are coming in.
Nothing like this will probably help. We're going to have it outside, it'll be streamlined and then getting some of the expected here sooner than we're, like we're having to do for tour.
Yeah, and also, you know, we've got the probation company. We're starting to have revocation hearings now. So we're going to have those come in.
What?
Come to court. So that's a good thing. But, so that's what we're going to be excited to.
Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? You have your two days, thank you.
Aye, thank you.
Item number three is rather weighty. We use as a descriptor. Approval, consideration and approval of the amendment to legal services agreement with the city of Jasper and bond counsel for the USDA project. And I'm going to let David Sipon, our city attorney, explain every single word of this.
As everyone's aware, we're in the midst of the sewer plant expansion project. And also, as y'all are aware, the cost for that project sort of increased dramatically for various reasons, including, I think, the difference in time. And as everybody's probably aware, construction costs have gone up in the last couple of years. So it required that the bond issuance end up have, having a, being three different bonds to come up with the total amount needed for the sewer plant expansions. And so that complicated the bond work itself. It complicates the issuance of the bonds. Means more work both by bond counsel and myself. And the original contract didn't really have any funding set out for the way the bond works. We will go through the bond validation, which will give our short-term lender assurance that there will be money to pay the short-term lender. And but in order to build the project, you got to go get the funds from the short-term lender, which is another totally separate transaction, but basically for the same amount of bonds. And that requires a fair amount of legal work. And that was not included within the original agreement. So we have proposed an amendment to that original agreement. We presented the amendment to Rural Development. And Rural Development has approved the proposed amended agreement. And therefore, I would appreciate a motion by counsel approving the amended legal services agreement and, you know, which is in consequence, I guess, of the dramatic change in, in the funding required for the sewer plant expansion. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that any of the counsel has.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve the consideration proof of this amendment to legal services agreement with the city of Jasper and the bond counsel for the USDA project.
Summate. Second.
Motion in a second. Counsel, do we have any discussion?
So David, do we anticipate any more additional cost other than usual additional cost from our delay or?
This, not from, not for legal services, there shouldn't be any additional cost. You know, right now, realistically, it's hard to get a contractor to tell you exactly what the material cost is going to be because it's changing on the day by day. Now, there is like a half a million dollars in the budget that is a contingency. So hopefully, the contingency fund will be large enough to cover any material increases. But that would be the only wild card that I'm aware of. You know, other than if they have bad weather, you know, they'll ask for extensions and, and then their operating costs due to the extensions and that kind of issue. But currently, we have contracts in place both for the plant and for the horse main extension. So if our contract costs dramatically change, then we should stay in budget.
And this money is covered up with the contingency correct?
That's correct.
Any further questions, counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same? The motion carries, your name, Mr. [inaudible]. Item number four, consideration approval of bond ordinance 2022-11. Authorization of mayor, city clerk, and city attorney to sign. And Mr. Sipon, this is your.
And this is sort of a continuation of my earlier discussion. In order to secure the funding for the sewer plant expansion, we have entered into a loan agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture and their sub-agency, which is Rural Development. And, and so Rural Development has agreed to loan us As a part of that financing, they've also agreed to give a grant to the city of approximately, I think, So the total project cost is $18,600,000. And so the way typically the funding works is that Rural Development, as I stated, makes a commitment to do the permanent financing, the permanent loan over 40 years. Currently, that loan is, I think, at an interest rate, I will say at 1.375. It may be 1.5, but a very good interest rate. And it's locked in for the entire life of the loan for 40 years. So nobody, you know, you can't go to a bank and get that type of interest rate. So a very good interest rate. But what we have to do is we enter into their loan agreements. You agree to issue revenue bonds in accordance with the bond ordinance that you're going to approve tonight. And the revenue bond says that you are dedicating the revenues of the water and sewer enterprise fund to pay back the loan. And, and so this is all part of the financing for the sewer plant plus the horse main line. And so tonight, you would be voting to approve the bond ordinance. And you would also be voting to authorize the mayor, the clerk, and myself to file. to file the validation petition in the Pickens County Superior Court to validate the issuance of the bonds and the bond ordinance. And then once we have that in place, we're able to get the short-term financing. That allows us to pay the contractor for the two years that it takes to build the plant. And then at the end of that two years, Rural Development will come in and pay off the loan based upon the bond ordinance that you're approving tonight. So I need a motion to approve the bond ordinance and to authorize the mayor, the clerk, and myself to sign the documents for the validation proceeding and to authorize us to perform the validation proceeding.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
In a second, please.
Second.
With the motion in a second, do I have any other discussion by counsel? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same. And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sipson. Item five, consideration approval of site access agreement with Verizon Wireless. Mr. County Governor.
Good evening. So the city has an elevated large storage tank. We call it the Lily Tank. That is under contract to be rehabilitated, needs to be painted. That is with Precise Contractors. Verizon Wireless has a lease agreement with the city to maintain equipment on top of that tank. And so in order to have the tank painted, they will need to remove that equipment temporarily. And in order to remove it, that means they've got to have a place to put it. So they bring in a temporary tower on site, and that is where the equipment is relocated to during the work from Precise, and then they relocate it back onto the tank. In order for them to bring in the tower, they will need definitely to do some guide wires and things like that to secure that tower. And before they do that, they have to do some investigational sampling, soil testing, make sure that everything where they picked the spots to do the guide wires is correct and is substantial enough to hold them. So Mr. Sipson has been working with Verizon Wireless on a site access agreement, which will allow them and their subcontractor to come onto the site and perform that due diligence work before they bring the temporary tower in. So we are requesting approval of the site access agreement, which is included in your package this evening with Verizon Wireless for the Lily Tank.
Thank you. Counsel, entertain a motion to approve this site access agreement with Verizon Wireless.
Second.
In a second, please.
Second.
Got the motion in a second. Any discussion by counsel on this?
Mayor, I would like to say that I've reviewed the site access agreement and had them do some changes. One of the changes was they had an open-ended agreement, and I had them limit it to be six months. We are sort of right now waiting on Precise Contractors to begin the project. So I just wanted to let y'all know that depending upon when that project starts, we may have to extend the temporary access agreement because we don't know when Precision Precisely is going to start and how long it will take.
Thank you. Any further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same. And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And those only there.
I'm right here. Ready to go.
Item number six, consideration approval of architectural services for the park.
Yes.
And since this is a mere endeavor that everyone's are.
Yes, so exciting news. Just as a recap, I think everyone in counsel understands that we are pursuing Appalachian Regional Commission, which is affectionately known as ARC funding, to provide the funding for this project. ARC has very precise procurement guidelines. And so in order to contract with an architectural firm for the design of the project, we needed to go through their very precise procurement process. We submitted or put out an RFP. Earlier this summer, we received six very high-quality packages back about the middle of early July. There was a scoring committee that was developed that was made up of the mayor, Mr. Looney, Dr. Proctor, Sonya, and myself. We went through our established criteria that we had laid out in the RFP. We found, we scored three top, can't think tonight, three top firms. And brought those firms back in for a presentation and for Q and A period. And based on the scoring with that, staff is recommending that we contract or enter into contract negotiations with Goodwin Mills and Kaywood or GMC out of Atlanta. This was probably one of the harder decisions, I think, we've had to make. It was a very tough decision. All six packages were excellent, and the three that we brought back in for presentations were just awesome. I don't think we could have gone wrong with any of them. I have included scoring information behind your package there that shows what scores worked that we came up with for each group. And then you also have a copy of the letter that is from Mr. Sipson certifying that we followed that procurement process for the architectural firm correctly. So we would ask that you approve the scoring committee's recommendation to enter into contract negotiations with GMC for the park.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve negotiations with GMC for architectural services for the park.
Second.
And a second, please.
Second.
Got the motion in a second. Any further discussion by counsel?
Mayor, I'm ready.
Yes, sir.
This process, as already been mentioned, was extremely difficult because of the quality of the organization that we had before us. I think it speaks to the changes that we have made in our city with commitment to leadership and professional guidance in operation of our city. Without naming the specific organizations that were interested in coming to Jasper and helping us with this project, things I won't mention them, but I will mention projects like Colonial Williamsburg, Truist Park, Chastain Amphitheater, just on and on and on of the locations that these organizations have worked with. And they made this district numbering criteria that is to someone who we felt understood what our mission and vision were for that piece of property and also demonstrated their ability to engage our stakeholders and secure financing for that project. So I think this action, though it was very difficult, moves this project from a little bit smoking mirrors to something that we can start really, really getting excited about and presenting to our citizens and show them what we hope to do for this town. Very proud of the efforts, so thanks, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same. And the motion carries.
Excellent, thank you.
Item seventy, consideration approval of film for a bear grills production. And who asked, how many of your son did you change?
Last but not least, saying the best to us, right? So the city has been approached, and they have been selected number one on a short list of three to be a destination to film a production featuring survivalist bear grills. And it's going to be a new adventure game show type hybrid series. And out of all of the areas that they looked at, they fell in love with the location that is off of Cove Road, right past the mine system. It's north on the property near the waterfall that they would like to potentially host this series. That parcel is currently owned by the DDA. Of course, we will know by the DDA as well on their agenda. The filming would be approximately four weeks for prep. They would like to start that around October the 10th through November the 15th. Then the production crew would be on site between November the 6th to the 18th. For the pre-production, there would be about thirty additional people in our beautiful city. And for the actual filming, that would increase to sixty people. And it's actually being done by a very reputable production company. I included the other items that they worked on, the other filming that they worked on and shows that they worked on in your packet. And so the staff is requesting that city council please consider allowing this production crew to come and film and hopefully put Jasper on the map even more than it is right now.
Will the second. Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve this project for the filming of a bear grills production on a property that is owned by DDA.
Yes.
Second.
In a second, please.
Second.
Any further discussion by counsel?
Mayor, if I could jump in, this is the second time within, I guess, about a year and a half that we've had a film production company come to the city, which I think is a good trend and it'd be wonderful, you know, if we get more and more. But as you get more and more of these types of companies, sometimes they won't apply law enforcement for crowd control or street control, wants the city to close the street. You know, you start having additional trash pickup. Sometimes the fire department's involved in that. You'll have a crowd in the middle of the summer. You can have people that have heat exhaust in. So we have talked in the past, perhaps enacting a film production ordinance. And I just wanted to bring that up again because it would give the council the opportunity to be proactive, to set up requirements for these people coming in. And then if they make a request of the police department or the fire department or close the street, you already have a process set up that would allow the city manager to know how to handle it and get approval. And so it formalizes things like insurance and street closure and using the fire department or the police department. And I just wanted to suggest that maybe we need to revisit that issue again because hopefully we'll have more and more people and companies coming in to film in Jasper.
We actually will bring that ordinance before city council to vote in as standard operating procedures. Considering this is off the beaten path and way in the woods near the waterfalls, we wouldn't expect there to be any impact on street closures or.
Traffic, that's not going to be the.
Traffic or anything like that. So I would request that, you know, in this instance, we go ahead and approve this since it doesn't impact those things. But staff will bring it back to you and ordinance to adopt that will have standards in it by which we can, we can measure any requests that come into us.
You don't have to have one of those in your brief of votes, do you?
Well, we provided one last year, and so that'll be a good starting point.
Okay, great. Sounds like a wonderful thing. So any further discussion by counsel on this action? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same. And the motion carries, so we have another move here. Committee reports. Development committee with the COF, Mr. Fox, Sonya, Tom.
Mr. Mayor, I really don't have anything distant or still in our board for you, but that would be coming up for council like us in our next meeting. But really nothing more to add at this time.
Street Parks Committee will be Ann Snavy and John Bass. Ann?
Of course, the walking bridge is closed at the Dog Pond. I could do that on the 30th concerning some boards. They have set up a walking, a big tour route walking path so they can still walk around. We're going to have a parks committee meeting soon and see what else we need to do with that. The RFP for the trails of project over at Doris Wellington should be complete, and we'll present those as soon as we have those. And the Lee Newton Park, we're going to have to have electrical design to upgrade, especially after all the issues we just had with tearing them down for their, for our little joyride. So those are the things that we'll be looking at.
Okay, thank you. Administration Committee, Mr. Looney and council members, same.
We have scheduled the administration committee meeting for Friday at four o'clock to discuss some items, continued discussion on some items and new discussion on others.
Is that in the work for?
No, I'm sorry. Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay.
But we will give a report at next council meeting.
Great, thank you. Water wastewater, Dr. Proctor and John Bass.
Lot going on behind the scenes, I guess. Obviously, our wastewater plant continues to creep forward toward that getting underway. We were approved by the Cherokee Water Authority to participate in their authority. Committee is currently evaluating the pluses and minuses of that from a business strategic, emergency, so forth. And hopefully that will be before us before too long. And GMC continues to work on our master plan. We have some information as it relates to that. Meters, I'm not sure where we are in the metering process.
We have a pre-con that was just scheduled this morning for, I believe, next Thursday.
Okay.
So they are getting, their material's still continued. They're getting ready to start on the base infrastructure, the towers and all of that sort of thing. And then they'll be starting on the meters probably the beginning of October.
Okay. Favorite dredging, we done over there, David?
Yes, sir.
I'll leave you. Dredging and intake. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I think Ken probably got a little bit of repeater work they got to figure out, but not quite figured out that on the antennas. But I think we're not far away.
Good, very good.
Thank you. Public safety committee, Jim Looney, Kirk Reddick.
I guess the most exciting thing is that the plans for the addition to the fire department are out for bid.
Yes, they are.
And I'm sorry, I don't remember the date.
October the.
I believe it's the 11th.
11th, yes.
We should be getting bids by then and.
We have gotten some email interest on it, so we hope that that will turn into companies that want to proceed with that work for us.
So we'll be moving on that one as quickly as we can get contractors lined up and materials to work with.
Good deal, Kirk.
For public safety, it's actually all-inclusive. It doesn't just cover public safety. It also covers public works. We. We wrapped up on the DDA's events for Second Saturday in our downtown area. Um, they were phenomenal events, well-attended. The public really, really enjoyed themselves. Our public safety did a great job. Jeep Fest has now been completed this year. Again, it was a huge success. Our public safety did another phenomenal job. It's nice to see them out there, engaging the public, walking around, talking to folks. And then the, the crew that seems to go unnoticed a good bit is our public works crew. And so, uh, the crew leader, Adam Howard, is folks. I want them to know that we appreciate them. Uh, I have personally worked with them on the Second Saturday events. They are usually the first city crews on-site during an event or a weekend event, um, and then they are always the last to leave. And so I, I wanna give them recognition and thank them for their hard work. It's been fantastic.
Good job. And also, we had the, uh, Art, uh, event this weekend that was very well-attended out there.
And, thank you. The Verizon Park Committee would be Jim Looney and Dr. Proctor. We covered some of that, we'll let you.
Yeah, I, thank you for the vote on, uh, getting the, the architect lined up. Uh, we will be continuing on that project and, uh, hopefully see some, some nice work over there quickly.
So a lot of the things that we have here are, it's, it's not like it's a mountain country, it's just that it's underreported in some ways, because we have so many things going on that we all know about. But sometimes we fail to actually tell what we're doing in the community. But I had a gentleman not too long ago tell me that, uh, recently, we've been doing much better with our communication. And I want to give, uh, Kim the, the accolades that she deserves on that, because she has done a fantastic job.
Agreed.
With a, with something that's hard to do, and you have to continue with it every single day.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your dedication.
Thank you.
And all the other great things that you do.
And, yeah, we're talking about some of those places.
Genius Fair Guy.
Counsel, at this point, I entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of legal real estate and personnel.
Summon.
And John and Ann, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
So if we will, please come out of regular room to executive session. Thank you so much for being with us, folks. Entertain a motion, do your jury.
Summon.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.